Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 15th, regular meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The City Council is conducting this meeting from the City Council Chamber, and staff are complying with the current regulations of the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA for safe indoor meetings. As a courtesy and technology permitting, members of the public may continue to provide live remote oral public comment via the city's Zoom video conferencing platform. However, the city cannot guarantee that the public's access to teleconferencing technology will be uninterrupted, and technical difficulties may occur from time to time. Members of the public desiring to provide comments at the meeting are encouraged to attend the meeting in person, as many of you have done tonight. We require that all in-person attendees wear masks, consistent with Contra Costa County health orders. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconference meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on that item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda titled "Public Communications." Public communications is for public comments for items not on the agenda. Any comments during public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be initially allocated for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the open session portion of the meeting, if necessary. This process is consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook. There's more. And will allow for all public comments to be received during the meeting for items not on the agenda. When I open the public comment period, use the raise hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only, which will alert staff that you have a public comment you would like to provide. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak on an item, please use the raise hand feature or state your intent to speak when the item is called. If you're attending in person, please complete a speaker identification card and line up behind the lectern at the appropriate time. Wait your turn, and once brought into the meeting, state your name and city of residence for the record. Please note that in-person public comments will be taken before any remote public comments. Please keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The City Council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively, and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council. Please do not use profanity during your comments. Given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings, and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live remote public comment, join the Zoom video conference meeting. The meeting ID and password are on the screen, and I'll read them. The webinar ID is 825-52829588, and the passcode is 887819. Should you choose to not provide public comments but would like to view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways: YouTube Live, you can visit the City of Walnut Creek's YouTube channel; cable broadcast, Comcast Channel 28 and Incorporated Walnut Creek; Rossmore Channel 26; Wave Channel 1028, that was previously Channel 29; and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You can also livestream online on the city's website. Now would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Darling?
Here.
Councilmember Haskew?
Here.
Councilmember Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Here.
Mayor Francois?
I'm here. Next on the agenda is a presentation by the Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors' Bureau in Walnut Creek Downtown. I'm pleased to invite Bob Linsheide, the President and CEO of Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors' Bureau, to provide the presentation.
I'm actually going to start. You can call me Bob. Brian Hirahara, I'm President of Walnut Creek Downtown. Believe it or not, I've been on the board for over 25 years. Makes me sound really old, but during that period, we've really seen our relationship with the Chamber and Visitors' Bureau grow and evolve over time. It started with the ice rink many years ago, and of late, with the leadership of Bob Linsheide, Margot Stafford, and Ed Del Bacaro, they approached us and said, with a principle that we need to rise above our competing interests and work for the betterment of Walnut Creek. They say it better than I, but that's the gist of it. And it's basically a founding principle of the Coalition for Walnut Creek that we're launching tonight formally. And it's basically that we're stronger if we work together. And it reminds me of the Walnut Creek Together, if you will. In our divisive, especially world and community today, I think it's even more important. Sorry, I have this control. So first, second bullet point, is the Coalition is going to discover how we can augment and enhance the city's economic development strategy. We actually have an Economic Development Working Group through the Chamber. We have a 7:30 Zoom call tomorrow morning. Bob likes his 7:30 Zoom calls. And basically, it's somewhat of a think tank and brainstorming group, some very intelligent and successful individuals from various industries, just collaborating to come up with ideas on how we can grow Walnut Creek's economic strategy and support the city. Next bullet point is that the Coalition will advocate for policies to create world-class innovation hubs in the region. Next slide. The Coalition exists to influence best possible outcomes for economic prosperity for Walnut Creek, to establish unique partnerships to help attract innovative businesses to the region. A great example of that is that because of the pandemic and e-commerce, both retail as well as office space are challenged in today's environment. So we need to be creative and figure out different types of concepts and uses and businesses that come into Walnut Creek to fill those gaps. Third bullet point is to bring community organizations together to influence policies to further Walnut Creek's regional influence. One immediate example of that is DRAA and the arts. They are already coming as a partner to the Coalition, and there's a whole host of other community partners and nonprofits that we look forward to bringing into the Coalition. And the fourth bullet point is to create a collective community voice. And while we may not agree on everything as groups, we agree that we're working for the betterment of Walnut Creek and that we're going to work together to create a better city and preserve our quality of life. And last, our shared vision is, as a regional economic force, Walnut Creek is the most inclusive and vibrant city for innovation and entrepreneurship in the Bay Area. And again, we look forward to partnering with the city, with the Coalition, and support the city's economic development efforts, as well as the City Council, and preserve us as a leader of the area. And we're very excited about this initiative and look forward to working with you. Without all, hand it over to the other Bob. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. For the record, I'm Bob Linsheide, President and CEO of the Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Bureau. So we're extremely grateful for the opportunity to present this tonight. Our presentation couldn't be better for timing. We're all looking forward to coming out of COVID. How many times have we said that? But the reality of it is, is that we've actually are in alignment with our diverse group of businesses and private sector leaders on that we need to work together for a better Walnut Creek, a shared vision of economic prosperity for the entire region. I probably should advance this. To advocate for proactive initiatives for the betterment, impact of the Walnut Creek community, facilitate community engagement outreach and feedback with our stakeholders. We are of the fundamental belief that when business succeeds, our community thrives. And conversely, when our community thrives, businesses succeed. We've adopted some guiding principles that we think is important for you to realize, and that's, first off, is people first. We commit to creating an inclusive economy that raises the standard of living for all, not just a few. A diverse economy. A diverse economy, we aim to foster an economy of diverse, sustainable, and not over-reliant on one sector. And you know, as a city that has relied on retail and auto sales for a number of years, we have to forge a new direction. It's about future generations. We take the long view, working to ensure that future generations can live, work, learn, and thrive here. Fourth is committed leadership. We treasure a diverse leadership committed to embedding diversity, equity, and inclusion into the mindset, into our systems, and our decisions. And finally, local and regional collaboration. We rise above our competing interests, as Brian said, and others will say that follow, and embrace collaboration to create greater economic prosperity for all. And we've developed some initial recommendations for your consideration. Obviously, we can't discuss these tonight, but we'd like to put it on the table for further discussion. We're well aware of the Urban Land Institute's ability to convene a technical advisory panel to look at issues around creating world-class innovation hub for Walnut Creek. Second is to create an overlay zone, and we know that zoning is key to any accommodation of business, to allow commercial space to be used for life science and food technology. As most of you know, we held a convening in January with some experts in the world of life science and food technology, and we think because of our location in Walnut Creek, so close to existing life science and food technology companies, that we're a perfect location for that consideration. We also believe that the city should consider on how to accommodate new retail concepts. The old retail concepts are no longer relevant in the future world, so it's important for us to consider that. And finally, the last bullet point is, we want to work with the city and the Coalition to convene major property owners to discuss strategies to move this process forward. That's my prepared comments, and I'd like now to call on our Chair, Board Chair Margot Stanford, for some remarks. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Francois and members of the City Council, and thank you, Bob. My name is Margot Stanford, and I am Board Chair for the Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors' Bureau. I am also Vice President of F&amp;M Bank here in Walnut Creek. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to share the elements of the Coalition for Walnut Creek this evening in collaboration with our partners from Walnut Creek Downtown. We are also looking forward in engaging our community organizations with this effort as well. The business community is essential to the prosperity of Walnut Creek. For as long as we can remember, retail sales has been the largest revenue source for the city. For decades, Walnut Creek has relied on retail sales tax, including auto sales. Without a thriving business community, Walnut Creek would be just another city. Our businesses are the economic driver of our city, and without the various commercial and retail businesses, Walnut Creek would be a sleepy suburban community, without the ability to provide the quality of life the city enjoys. As Brian mentioned earlier, the Walnut Creek Chamber has adopted an initiative this year that we must rise above our competing interests and embrace authentic collaboration to create greater prosperity for all. We're so excited, the opportunities the Coalition for Walnut Creek will bring to our city. I'd like now to offer Ed Del Bacaro, the Chair-elect of the Chamber, to speak.
Thank you, Margot. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for this opportunity. So Ed Del Bacaro, I run a small business here. We have 20 members in real estate. I'm a past Chair of the Walnut Creek Library Foundation, on the Board of the Chamber Music San Francisco, and I will be Chair-elect of the Chamber. First, I also want to thank all the members from the Chamber and the downtown merchants that came. Stand up. As Bob and Brian mentioned, we are here as a coalition to celebrate our passion for improving Walnut Creek. Thank you. So that's why it was important for everybody to come, and there's actually 60 more, and our intention is to channel all our creative energies, our business acumen, to help Walnut Creek work with the city, staff, council, to make it a better city. So the only points I'm going to reemphasize for Margot and Bob and Brian is, the world is changing as we know, but tactically, where it's dramatically changing in Walnut Creek, yesterday's tenants are disappearing out of this area because of wages are not high enough to pay for the cost of housing. So they're moving to Sacramento area, this so-called fire tenants. That's the insurance company's banking. So the cube farms that filled a lot of our buildings, as we call them, Dilbert tenants, are gone. So who's replacing them? It's medical, life sciences, advanced manufacturing. Most of the city downtown is not zoned for those uses. So we want to work with the city in affecting the general plan and affecting the process. And then in closing, the other two statements. There are case histories, so the case of the Urban Land Institute is they worked with Dublin, Emeryville, Brisbane, and some of the other cities. What does it take to capture some of these tenants? And so one of the recommendations is to hire an outside consultant who specializes, would work for the city, who specializes in life sciences and knows how to help process that through, explain to the tenants what they need to do, or developers. And when we say we convene large builders, we actually convene all the owners to the extent we can. So thank you very much, and we hope to work with you in the future.
Great. I think that concludes the presentation. We're very grateful that all of you are here. That was very impressive when you all stood up, and for the collaboration of both these great entities. I'll turn to my colleagues and see if you have any questions, maybe for Mr. Hirahara and Mr. Linsheide.
I don't have any questions, but I really was emotional when this group said the Pledge of Allegiance. I haven't heard that much energy and combination. It gave me not only hope that this group is going to make a coalition that makes Walnut Creek even better, but that this is the start of our changing the world. I think it was that important to hear that resonance of the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much for that moment.
Councilmember Wilk?
I also don't have any questions, but I do want to say how impressive it is for me to have been participating with Walnut Creek Downtown and on the Chamber of Commerce as well, and hearing what's going on now and the vibrancy. I'm really excited about what Walnut Creek has to offer. Obviously, we're talking about Downtown next, and that affects each and every one of you and many more hundreds that are out there, and many more thousands that come to Downtown Walnut Creek and even throughout Walnut Creek. So seeing this kind of unity and the collaboration, and also the partnership with the city, is going to be so important moving forward. And that was never more poignant to me. When I traveled overseas to our sister cities and our partner cities, I mean, we met with our colleagues who were the mayors and City Council members in Japan, in Kita, Japan, in Hungary, as well as in Italy, and they're so impressed with Chambers of Commerce. They want to meet the Chambers of Commerce. It's like the council members were great and all, but when can we be introduced to the Chambers of Commerce? And it showed me how important that relationship is, not just to those countries and those cities, but that collaboration that does happen with the city leadership. So again, thank you all for showing up tonight. Thank you for the continued participation, and thank you for the multiple emails and coffees that we're going to be having over the course of these next couple of years.
Councilmember Darling is a liaison to the Chamber?
Thank you, and I really appreciate the effort. I know how hard it is sometimes to break out of silos, but every time I've seen government agencies, individual interest groups do it, it ends up being such a great win for the greater good, because when we take our individual interests and put them together, turns out there's an awful lot of commonality. And I really appreciate the efforts that you guys are putting into this, and it will bear fruit. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Thank you all very much for being here this evening, and I will echo my colleagues' comments that when we work together on a shared vision, although we may disagree, we are more incredibly powerful when we do. I just have a question for the City Manager. How do we learn more about some of these ideas? Are they talking to you about when they might come back with more information? Is this a study session potentially?
There have been discussions, let me back, Dan Buckshai, City Manager, yes, there have been some discussions with the Chamber. Many of these ideas, we've been discussing for a while. There are a few surprises sprinkled in that we'll talk about further as well, certainly.
New ideas.
But yeah, absolutely.
Opportunities.
That's right, all of the above. So there will be definitely lots of discussion on this in the coming weeks and months, and we'll have future updates, certainly, as, you know, we have various studies underway that support some of these efforts in terms of a retail study, an office study, as well as our economic development strategy, so.
Because it is one of our priorities, so we're.
Absolutely. So we'll be looking to see how to weave this in with the other initiatives.
Okay, I just want to echo all the sentiments and just offer this, that we're the third partner in this with both of you, and that we're committed to, you know, doing things differently than we've done in the past and being more nimble and innovative. We're still the government, so there's a process in hearings, but, you know, in terms of the things you're talking about, life science and food technology, we'd love to see those types of companies set up shop and really continue the vibrancy of our city. So thank you very much for all for being here and for the presentation.
Thank you.
Well, you don't have to leave. We're not that boring.
This is not the end of the meeting.
We're going to support a restaurant.
So next on our agenda is a consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull any item for discussion? Does any member of the public wish to comment on an item on the consent calendar? If so, please use the raise hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only. If you'd like to provide a public comment, for those who desire to provide public comment on a consent calendar item, please raise your hand now. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review, aren't included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. Please note that in-person comments will be accepted prior to remote comments. And I will see if there are any members in the Chamber, any members of the public in the Chamber that would like to address the council on a matter that's on the consent calendar. And I'm not seeing any, so Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on Zoom?
We do not have any hands raised on Zoom for this consent calendar.
And with that, I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Move to approve item number two, the consent calendar A through E.
Second.
Can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Public communications, this portion of the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated at this time for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the meeting, if necessary. If any member of the public wishes to provide public comments, please use the raised hand feature if you're connected by Zoom or *9 if audio only. And for those who desire to provide public comment, please raise your hand now so that we can identify the total number of speakers that desire to speak. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. You know that written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record at this time. I will note that the time is 6:25, and we will take public comments on items not on the agenda until approximately 6:55, and then the remainder of any such comments at the end of open session. Please note that in-person comments will be accepted prior to remote comments, and I note we have a few members of the public that would like to address us that are in the Chamber, so I will invite the first speaker to come forward.
Evening.
Good evening.
It has been said that if your premise is wrong, your conclusions will most likely be wrong. In the past few months, some members of the City Council and others have given statements that are misinformation given to the public concerning activities in front of the Planned Parenthood facility. Rather than repeat the false information made by certain council members, I will give the correct statements for the record. No pro-life people go into the Planned Parenthood parking lot to talk to clients. No pro-life people have ever been arrested or convicted of a crime in front of the Planned Parenthood Center. There are no armed protesters, nor have there ever been, in front of the Planned Parenthood. There is no law prohibiting filming in front of Planned Parenthood. No woman or man is denied access to healthcare at Planned Parenthood. Some women and men entering the abortion center may be alarmed or distressed after we warn them of the many ambulances called to the Planned Parenthood facility to take away injured clients, or that a new California law allows non-doctors to perform abortions. This would cause me alarm and distress, too. The Supreme Court has not addressed the constitutionality of a buffer zone where women can enter the facility without physically encountering the protesters. The Walnut Creek Planned Parenthood setting is completely different from the San Francisco, Oakland, and Napa locations. There has never been a car accident caused by the pro-life presence in front of Planned Parenthood. The police lieutenant made that crystal clear, and two of you on the council rejected his clarification on record because it didn't fit your false narratives.
And sir, you may have put in a speaker card, but if you could state your name and city of residence for the.
No problem.
Next speaker.
James Cook, Antioch. Thank you for hearing me tonight. And last week, I just want to reiterate, I thank you for the presentation that you guys had a couple weeks ago about the buffer zone. I think you guys have been very fair to hear the public equally, and the lawyer did a great job of presenting it without his attitude inside of it, just the facts. Last week, or two weeks ago, I made some statements and got some little bit of pushback from the facts that I pushed out there, but I don't believe that your council can be non-bias and act upon just facts and leave your emotions out of this issue, simply because, you know, as a part of the public, I would like to know how many of those 42 police calls have actually were caused by pro-life out there on the sidewalk, and how many were caused by people and patrons there at the facility. And I would like to know why, whenever that facility calls 911, why they ask the ambulance to not turn on the sirens and not to hurry up and not to alarm and cause attention to their facility. The women are important, and so they don't need to be telling the ambulance driver how to drive. The women are important, and so they don't need to be telling the ambulance driver how to drive. What I would say is that you need to look at the video of that meeting and realize that the facts were not there. No one has ever trespassed on that property. There's already a law there. You don't need to make another law because the laws that are already there are being enforced. And if there was an issue, where's the citations?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Next speaker.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm from Martinez. My name is Sergio Araya. Born and raised all my life here in this county. I'm a sidewalk counselor. And if you're saying anything about those 42 violations, I've yet to see what has happened to the day that I was violated, hit, as well as another event, being thrown coffee at me and another person. But as well as the prior time where I was hit and nothing's happened, the person that hit me. So you had your officers come out and take that information from me, as well as the other two people that were with me on those two other times. It's close to a year now since that first time that incident happened, or actually being punched in the face is not an incident. That's an assault, knocked down to the ground. As well as the other member that's exactly 14 years older than me. That puts him about 80 years old that was hit. So we're out there trying to help the young ladies, as well as the men, to make a good decision about life. You are all here living. God gave you that right through your parents, every single one of you, all of us that are here right now. Thank God that you're alive, but that's what we're there for, is to help those women to have their children. I hear so much bad things that what people talk about us. We're here, they're to help, and nothing but to help. But all the things that come out here with all these violations that supposedly have happened, where are they? It's just unreal that these facts don't come out when the fact is that I was violated, I was punched. And to this day, nothing's happened. But, you know, I'm here. And I forget the gentleman for hitting me, as well as the young lady throwing coffee.
Thank you, Mr. Araya. Your time's up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Hannah Wohler. I'm commenting on the issue of the buffer zone proposed for the Planned Parenthood here in Walnut Creek. Listening to the accusations brought forth, they were concerning. There was talk of unsafe environment, signs being attached to city poles, racial slurs, blocking traffic in the driveway, and screaming from the protesters. I would like to see evidence of such activity. I'm one of the protesters. I'm one of the people protesting as the horror of abortion. There are references to 42 calls from the police. Thankfully, anyone can call the police. But what were they called for? Was there any evidence of the atrocities that have been expressed? There were none. Planned Parenthood has several cameras already installed that we would welcome the use of. Abortion is murder, and everyone knows it. At the Planned Parenthood on Tuesdays and Fridays, babies are murdered through dismemberment and decapitation. There was reference by Councilwoman Haskew to God about not assuming his thoughts. I agree. Thankfully, we don't need to guess. God says in his word that he hates the hands that shed innocent blood. As a protester against the shedding of innocent blood, please remove the scourge of Planned Parenthood from Walnut Creek. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. And city clerk, we'll go to comments on Zoom now, unless there are any other members in the chamber that would like to provide comments during public communications. And I'm not seeing any. So onto Zoom we go.
First speaker is Lori M.
Good evening, Lori. Are you on?
I am non now. Can you hear me now?
I can. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lori Moreo, and I am commenting on the speaker project for Philip Ho, who is unable to attend. We are both Walnut Creek residents. Philip says, "I live near the 30-acre Seven Hills Ranch. During four-plus years of construction of the proposed speaker project, which involves a massive grading of soil and drilling of bedrock next to Heather Farm Park, it is inevitable that the duck ponds, swimming pools, tennis courts, playgrounds, play structures, plants, trees, and buildings will be severely impacted by dust kicked up and carried across the park by the usual offshore wind." Fugitive dust is dust that is generated by and escapes from construction sites. The grading for the proposed project will require the movement of 17,000 dump trucks worth of dirt and crushed rock. Water trucks may be used to control dust, but warm weather, low humidity, and extensive grading of 30 acres over a prolonged period of time will make it impossible to keep dust and fine soil particles from becoming airborne. Much of the dust may actually be airborne toxins in the form of cancerous silica dust, something generated by construction sites and found in construction materials, such as topsoil, crushed rock, and glass, as well as concrete, mortar, drywall, asphalt, and more. Silica dust is classified by OSHA as a toxic and hazardous substance. It is unclear how Heather Farm Park will be protected and maintained during construction, how it will remain free of toxins, and who will be paying for it should the proposed speaker project be approved by the county. Even though the site is technically under county jurisdiction, the project would certainly impact the park and the neighboring communities. When the draft EIR is released, we respectfully ask that you comment on the effects that dust and contaminants from the project will have on Heather Farm Park's natural habitats and wildlife, and on the public health and safety of park users, of which there are more than a million annually. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Moreo. Next speaker.
Next speaker is user BG.
Hello, my name is Barbara Guinness, and I've lived in Walnut Creek since 1996. And I attended a Parks and Open Space meeting in February and April of 2021 and heard about—heard both Trails Committee members and Parks and Open Space commissioners express positive comments about the bike community and how they want to provide more bike trails in the Walnut Creek open space for the bikers. I've also read comments from the actual bike community, and they express a desire to help build bike trails in the open space and raise funds to pay for new bike trail construction in the open space. I think many of us are aware of all the trail destruction and serious safety concerns with mountain bikers using Walnut Creek open space, single-track trails. Thus, in this meeting, I wanted to reach out to the mayor, council members, and any of the public that might be listening to encourage—have them encourage the bike community to volunteer their time, particularly on weekends, to educate their fellow bikers in using the Walnut Creek open space. They could discuss the importance of following the rules and only traveling on trails which allow for bike traffic. Hearing open space rules from one of their own would be valuable and impactful for them. Also, it would be helpful to propose to the bike community if they could use all their fundraising might to lease and purchase their own land for their bike trails. Please consider seriously these two items. Having mountain bikers enforcing the trail rules and using their funds to purchase their own properties would really alleviate much of the open space destruction that goes on and on currently because by many of the mountain bikers. Thank you very much for considering these two items.
Thank you, Ms. Guinness.
And I don't see any additional hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll close public communications. And first, I'll ask any of my colleagues if they have any questions or comments related to the public comments we heard. Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much. Regarding the comment letter that was read regarding the Seven Hills Ranch and the soon-to-be-released draft environmental review documents, do we intend to review them and provide comments to the county?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions of staff? All right, then we'll move on to council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests, closed session announcements. Mr. City Attorney.
There are no closed session announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City manager reports.
Yes, good evening. Dan Buckshai, city manager. I have two updates I'd like to share this evening. First is related to the new state and county health orders related to the pandemic that take effect tomorrow, based upon the trends related to the Omicron variant. Just as the public health officers had predicted, there was a large surge during the holidays into January, and we reached peak about a week or two ago. And we are seeing a quick decline in the number of cases, which is tremendous news. It's following a similar trend that occurred elsewhere in the country and throughout the world, for that matter. As such, the state and the county have issued new orders, some of which is informed by vaccination rates. Contra Costa County recently hit a milestone in that we are over 80% as a region, 81%. Walnut Creek is at 85%. And I'd like to note that our workforce is at 90%. So tremendous increases, which has really helped keep hospitalizations down in the Bay Area compared to other regions where vaccination rates are much lower. As such, because of this, fully vaccinated folks, as of tomorrow, will not need to wear a mask in many indoor settings. Those who are unvaccinated will continue to need to wear a mask in indoor settings. There are some exceptions, some of which do impact our operations at the city. In addition to those, K through 12 schools, students will continue to wear masks. The state is going to revisit that in about two weeks. There may be additional guidance and changes. Preschools, long-term healthcare, long-term care facilities, and other health facilities, masks will still be required, and on public transit. So as such, our operations are impacted as many of our programs and services do serve some folks. We obviously run preschools. We have our Performing Arts Center and some other programs and services with at-risk populations in which we will have our employees and participants wearing masks. Also, there was a separate change that was announced through the county health department that is specific to Contra Costa. It may be the case in other counties, but it's not statewide, is that local businesses will no longer be required to check vaccination status or testing status in order to enter a facility such as a restaurant. Again, that's because the vaccination rate here in the region is over 80%. So with that, those are changes that are forthcoming. We're working that through in our city operations. Information will be published about this as well. And then I just do want to highlight, again, the importance of vaccines. A public service announcement is that 88% of all COVID-related deaths are those who are unvaccinated, so a very telling statistic on that front. But overall, great news that we are moving in this direction, that the wave is lessening, and hopefully we'll get back to a greater sense of normalcy in our day-to-day lives and here at the city. Shifting gears, the other announcement that I had, as I am very proud to share, if this is legible at all, is that the city did receive from the Government Finance Officers Association the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This is the first time we've received this award in over a decade. And I do want to point out what your council sets as a priority matters. Your council set financial processes and financial stability as a priority a few years ago. As such, we worked very diligently to update our budget materials, our budget book, and information that's generally available for your council to make decisions and for the public at large. And I do want to thank our finance department for pulling this off amidst a couple very tough years focused on other things and still saw this through to the end. And this is a nice recognition. So thank you to our entire finance team and to everybody who contributed to the budget process to help make this happen. That concludes my update. Thank you, mayor.
That was a good news update. Thank you, Mr. Buckshai. And thank you to our employees for getting vaccinated and for the turnaround, hopefully with the surge here in Omicron. So council member reports. I'll start off with Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you, mayor. It does feel like the last two weeks have been rather busy, and it's nice to be back in the council chambers as opposed to trying to Zoom in from a hotel room in Washington, DC for a meeting which was a long night. Mentioning those meetings in the District of Columbia, I had the opportunity to be in DC for two days, for two weeks, to—with meetings with the federal administration and other key people. Our focus was really on the $1.2 trillion bipartisan infrastructure law and how we can ensure that communities, counties, cities, villages, towns across the country have an ease of getting access to these dollars because they don't come automatically the way the American Rescue Plan distributed the funds. You actually have to seek and apply for them. And there are at least 50 different programs and ways to do that. $50 billion of that $1.2 trillion is expected to come to the state of California. And the League of California Cities will be working on how we can assist and provide resources to our communities to ease that process of applying and getting all those dollars. We also had an opportunity to meet with Senator Feinstein at length to discuss our priorities in California. And she gave us 45 minutes, which was a real honor. There were only three of us there. And she was particularly interested in our economic recovery work that we'd been doing in California, the value of the ARPA funds and how they were being put to use. And she was particularly intrigued by the stories of the rebound program in Walnut Creek and what we were doing with downtown dining and was it working? So I tried to convince her to come to lunch. I probably won't happen, but I tried. Our Housing Community Development Committee met today, the subcommittee of the council. Councilmember Darling and I are on that. And you will—you, the rest of the council, we shortly seeing our recommendation to consider additional monies to Resources for Community Development to invest in the proposed affordable housing project at the corner of Ignacio Valley Road and Civic Drive. It's called 699 YVR. And it's an exciting project. It's 97 units of a low-income, very affordable housing. Our negotiations with Toyota Walnut Creek continue. Nothing to report specifically yet. Last week, the League of California Cities had its statewide policy committee meetings, the first for the year. And I really want to thank Councilmember Haskew, Councilmember Wilk, and our city manager for the work that they're doing on three of those committees, Revenue and Tax, Environmental Quality, and Public Safety. Our engagement in that makes a difference, so thank you for doing that. Speaking of the League of California Cities, the board is approximately 57 people, and the board members and will be here next week in meeting in Walnut Creek. We are hosting them. They will be meeting on the stage at the Leshur Center for the Arts. And then we will be dining in downtown Walnut Creek next Thursday evening. So thank you to all who have helped us organize this. And County Connection was gracious enough to showcase the trolley and is going to provide three downtown trolleys to transport the guests from the Residence Inn to dinner on next Thursday evening. And finally, I will say today was Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce's Civic Affairs Forum. I think many of my colleagues were there, as were colleagues from around the state. The presentation and discussion was about the state of the state and featured a representative of the California Chamber of Commerce and the CEO and executive director of the League of California Cities. And I think I've taken up enough of all of your time.
I believe it also featured the president of the League of California Cities, so thank you for your service there and for the entree that gives you to meet with folks like Senator Feinstein. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Darling.
Thank you. And just a few things. One of the things with the Housing and Community Development meeting this morning, when you see the recommendation coming out of that, it's a really important piece of funding because it will increase the likelihood of that project receiving much, much more in state funding. So it's taking our money and really moving it forward and getting a lot more money for the project. Two MCE things. The last time we talked about the rate setting for MCE, PG&E had not yet set their rates. They have now increased their rate. They have now increased their rates, and so at this point, MCE has reset our rates. So now anybody that is an MCE customer will be at 7% less than the PG&E rates, and that will apply across the city because the city is an MCE customer, and also to all of you here in the city who are MCE customers. Yeah, that's for electricity. Natural gas is the one that's been frustrating everybody on my block, and so this is for the electricity. The other big MCE announcement was they are entering into a project down in Kern County with 100 megawatts of solar, but this is the first one that also has the battery storage with it, 75 megawatts of battery storage, and that's enough to power electricity for 52,000 houses, and it takes away the problem that we've been having with solar, that the sun goes down. So now they have the batteries, so the project can provide a baseload of electricity, and that's an important maturation of the solar industry in California. And that is pretty much it for me.
Sounds good. Councilmember Wilk.
Great news about MCE, too, and that really helps set us forward on one step closer to all renewable electric grid reliability and green collar jobs. That's great to hear. So we met a couple of meetings on the ADHOC Committee that I'm on with Councilmember Silva, or Pre-Mayor Protem Silva, discussing next planning steps, building requirements for outdoor spaces and bars. I'm sorry, it's Luella. I'm sorry, Councilmember Haskew. My apologies.
Do I know you?
It was a year of being with Cindy. It's hard to forget. So, no, of course, with Councilmember Haskew. So talking about how this will work for bars and outdoor spaces and building requirements, and a lot more on that to come. I am on the Environmental Quality Policy Committee, and we voted for the work program for this year, which will include four major areas: climate change and resiliency, which includes accessibility and fire prevention; water issues, including drought and water reuse; energy and utilities; and solid waste and recycling. So those will be the projects we'll be working on for the year. I'm also a member of the DEI Task Force, and we met to discuss other ways to highlight and promote events that celebrate different ethnicities and cultures in Walnut Creek, and where these could be, how they could be organized. We had a lot of discussion in that area, as well as further discussion on a survey of the community on inclusiveness and diversity, and we'll continue to give some updates on that as we continue with the Task Force. I sit on the Board of Directors for County Connection, and we're coming up with a meeting on this Thursday to discuss legislative advocacy program and battery electric bus updates. So while we have MCE and taking care of the solar and clean energy on that front, we're also working at the same time with how we're going to be handling this for transportation. So these are all part of our new movement toward clean energy. And that is my update.
Terrific. Councilmember Haskew.
Well, I'm also, I'm on the Rebound Committee, and we're doing Walnut Downtown Next with a
Yes, you are.
With whoever this guy is. Never seen him before. But in the spare time, I am kind of really involved in transportation. The Local Regional Transportation Committee, and I've made up of six cities, and we report to Contra Costa Transportation Authority, so I am captaining that. I am also a member of the Innovate 680, and we spend a lot of time talking about the balance between facilitating travel on the freeways and how do we keep balance with the city streets that are impacted by how crowded the freeway might be if there's a problem, and how do we, how do we do it equitably. On the Rev and Tax Committee, we're focusing on setting up another discussion and research about how to balance sales tax allocations between the cities that have distribution centers and those that have trucks and end users in their city. Clearly, the internet is taking over in a certain way a lot of the retail that would, that would affect Walnut Creek's sales tax, and maybe it's not so fair if it all goes to a new city that just put a long building in and that essentially maybe bribed the organization to build that building anyhow.
I think those are called tax rebates.
Whatever. I am obligated, because I promised somebody that I would continue my driving and how to be a better person rules, and so we're going to focus on yielding to pedestrians at crosswalks and giving bicyclists room. Rule one, don't block or park in crosswalks. Rule two, allow time for bicyclists to traverse intersections. Rule three, treat bicyclists like slow-moving cars. Oh, boy, are they ever. Do not tailgate with them and wait until traffic allows to, for you to pass safely. And rule four, and the last one, is slow down when passing bicyclists and give them at least three feet of space when passing. Last time I announced that Arts and Rec was on a hiring spree, I'm guessing, I don't remember actually the date of the meeting, but it's probably still hiring people. So for people of all ages who want to take parts in the city, we're looking for people to work with us, especially in the summertime, because that's the biggest demand on that part of thing. And last but not least, I have Jump Start Your BART, Ride BART and Get $50 Back. Pledge to Ride BART at least one day a week in place of driving alone, and you will be eligible to receive a special one-time $50 incentive office, offer from 511 Contra Costa. And if you'd like more information, the website is hello@511cc.org. And I think that's the end of it, except I might have had a small attention deficit issue. Did you talk about masks in the theater, City Manager?
I referenced it generally. I didn't go into detail.
Thank you.
Well, great. I have the privilege of representing all of you in the Mayor's Conference, which is continuing to happen virtually. We had a presentation from Rebecca Saltzman, who's the president of the BART Board. She was talking about a lot of interesting things that are happening system-wide. Their ridership is not surprisingly still down, and I, it's on my to-do list to follow up with her. Didn't have the opportunity to do it in that bigger Zoom meeting, but I will by email on a pet peeve and a potential improvement. One of them, the pet peeve is on Clipper cards and how difficult, I think, and unuser-friendly they are in terms of trying to get a refund or trying to transfer balances, and I think that needs to be made a lot easier to encourage people to ride BART. And then in terms of a potential improvement, she showcased kind of a revamp of the El Cerrito del Norte BART station, and I was quite envious, because all their stations are, including Walnut Creek's, are of the 50, 60-year-old vintage and in need of replacement at some point. And I'd like to have a better understanding of what BART's capital improvement plans are for those facilities and that they have a plan and that they're executing on it. I serve on Recycle Smart Board, and I'm on a, with Mayor Protem Silva, and I am on the Personnel Committee of that Board. We met virtually to discuss the potential COLA adjustment for our employees of Recycle Smart, and we're gathering input and data from each of the member agencies, as well as from comparable salary data from around the region. And then I'm really liking some of these perks of being the mayor. One of them is that I get to talk to groups of students. I had the pleasure of meeting with the fifth-grade junior Girl Scout troop from Valley Verde Elementary a week or so ago. There we are in front of the City Hall. They did not bring cookies with them, unfortunately, but one of those young women would like to be a police officer, and she was very excited to be able to tour some of the police facilities, see the police cars, not the dogs, but see kind of the detention, the temporary detention facilities, and really a great group of young women that it was nice to host them here at City Hall. I also was able to participate in the Community Cleanup Crew that Karen Mariner and her group, Karen is really spearheaded, and Councilmember Wilk recognized her as a hero among us last year. And so she enlisted a group of at least 50 people, I think, if not more. Councilmember Darling was there. My son Andrew is there, all the way to the left, and it was just a, it was a really great group of people that combed the downtown area from, you know, from Newell to Civic and the BART station, and just cleared a lot of trash in the process. So kudos to her and the good work she's doing. Her group meets every other Saturday, and please go to her website, which is thecleanupcrew.org, all one word, thecleanupcrew.org, to find out about their next event and to volunteer and participate. I know my son, who I sort of had to encourage greatly to come with me, talked about how much fun it was and how he'd like to do it again.
It is a weirdly satisfying experience.
That's a good way to describe it. And that would be the end of my announcement, so we'll move on to our consideration items. Next on the agenda is a consideration item entitled Community Survey Results. At this time, I would invite staff to provide the staff presentation.
Good evening. Dan Buckshai, City Manager. I'm going to introduce this item as our consultant, Sarah Labatt, heads to the podium here. So just as a quick refresher, it was at your August 3 meeting that the council directed staff to engage with a polling consultant to hold a community survey, and then on October 19 of this year, you directed that that survey be done in the November to January timeframe and that we focus on a potential for a sales tax measure to fund critical program services and facilities. So we did just that. We contracted with EMC Research. The poll was conducted January 4 through 9, and here to share the results of that survey is Sarah. And with that, welcome, Sarah. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, council, city manager, staff, and members of the public. My name is Sarah Labatt. I am a principal at EMC Research, and this is my first time presenting in a mask, so I'll try to speak clearly. I've been fortunate to do them all virtually till now, so let me know if I'm being too mumbly. Okay. Thank you. So a quick overview of the methodology that we followed to conduct this survey, and then we'll go through the results of the survey. It's fine in the lower right-hand corner. Nothing really comes up there data-wise. So the survey was conducted of likely November 2022 voters in Walnut Creek. It was a mixed mode survey using both telephone and online methodologies. By phone, we used both cell phones and landline phones to contact a random sample of voters, and online, we used both email as well as text messages to contact those voters. As was mentioned, the survey was conducted in early January, the 4th through the 9th. We did 400 interviews with a random sample of Walnut Creek voters, so the margin of error on this data is plus or minus 4.9 percentage points as we go through the data. As you know, we've done work for the city before, so we do have a few opportunities to look at what has changed. Our last survey here was in 2015, so I would caution us to think a lot of time has passed. There's been a large gap, but we thought it was relevant in some cases to have some of that data to share. So the big picture findings, and then we'll walk through, and I'll share the data itself with you. First of all, most voters do feel that Walnut Creek is headed in the right direction, and many, most trust the council to properly manage tax dollars. We do see crime and safety raised as the most important local issues at this time. Awareness of need for additional revenue is fairly low, and there is some general tax aversion and skepticism of government financial or fiscal management. We see this in a lot of communities throughout California, certainly. A majority, 57%, say that they would support a half-cent sales tax measure for city services today in Walnut Creek, and that support is largely sustained through the course of the survey as we give them additional information about a potential measure. Support's largely driven by interest in maintaining the quality of life in Walnut Creek. We do see crime prevention, disaster preparedness as two of the sort of big issues of particular interest, but there are many city programs and services that the public feels are important. Finally, the information that really emphasizes the fiscal accountability of how you spend your money and how a general tax would augment the city's budgets is definitely compelling as well, like talking about how the tax burden is shared with visitors, accountability measures that ensure dollars are spent properly from your revenues. So now let's go through the data. There we go. So first of all, some general issue environment questions before we get to the ballot measure itself. So one question we like to ask in a lot of surveys, and the text of the questions is actually in the lower left, so I don't know if that's blocking people from being able to see it. But this question is, is Walnut Creek going in the right direction, or is it pretty seriously off on the wrong track? And this is something that we ask in all communities all over California, and in fact, it's asked in the state poll for, from IGS out of UC Berkeley. They do a statewide poll, and they just released their numbers today. And so Walnut Creek here is at 60% say it's going in the right direction, 32% saying it's going in the wrong track. The state numbers are nearly flipped with wrong track over 50 and right track in the 30s. So certainly thinking about Walnut Creek and how it looks for you today compared with sort of how people think the broader issues in the state. People have a pretty positive opinion of how things are going in Walnut Creek. You can see we've asked this before, and the dotted line indicates a gap in data, so that straight line, you can assume probably isn't really straight if we could ask people every day, but we do see that people have a generally positive outlook right now in Walnut Creek. We asked an open-ended question. What's the most important problem facing Walnut Creek today? We let them give us any response they like, and we code them into categories that combine like responses, so we can really see what are the big picture issues. We don't prompt these issues. We just give them an open-ended question. And you can see crime and safety really come up as the top issues facing Walnut Creek right now. 38% said crime or safety was the top issue. That was followed by a lot of issues that kind of grouped together: growth and overpopulation, traffic and congestion, homelessness, et cetera. The note on the right is just a little bit about what we've seen in prior data. Back in 2015, we saw that traffic and congestion were the top mentions in this same question among voters in Walnut Creek, followed by growth. And we really didn't see a lot of attention on the crime and safety issue at that time. We also ask if they believe the city of Walnut Creek has a need for more money: a great need, some need, a little need, or no need. You can see the current data there in that top line at 2022. 9% say the city has a great need, and other 36% some need. So it's a little bit low, that sort of need for money, when you're thinking about how many people out there in the community are really aware that the city needs additional revenue. That need, that awareness is somewhat low at this time. You see 30% saying no real need, and that's been pretty consistent going back to the last poll we did. So certainly an opportunity here to really talk and listen to the voters and help really support the reality that this additional revenue might be something that can help you do the things that they want. We also asked a number of questions about their general attitudes about taxes and their trust in government, and you can see, and sorry, the text is small, and I wish I had it right here, but really what we see is that there's broad conceptual support for a quality-of-life tax, as well as trust in the city council to manage those tax dollars, but we do see about half saying that they believe they would vote against any tax increase. So that top number, the services and facilities that are important to our quality of life in Walnut Creek, even if it means raising taxes, 69% agree with that statement and 33% disagree. So we see this conceptual support for the idea of increasing revenues to help pay for those services that are important to quality of life, even with a tax increase. We also see a lot of trust in the city council. At 59% say agreeing that they trust the Walnut Creek City Council to properly manage our tax dollars. So now we're going to get into the actual measure itself as we tested it in the poll. And we, working with the city and staff and legal, we developed a ballot question that we used just to test in the poll. It's a, you know, tried to represent the best we could. What could go to the ballot, a fair description. a fair description that met the requirements for ballot questions in California. So that's here on the left-hand side. You know, it asks about a general tax measure to provide. I'm going to get my computer out. I really can't read. I really can't read that far. Apologies. Yeah, if you can make it bigger. Oh, that would be, that's fantastic. Thank you so much. This is when I need glasses, and my husband is in my head going, you should get some To provide funding to maintain and enhance City of Walnut Creek services and facilities, including crime prevention, public safety, disaster preparedness, parks and open space, youth and senior programs, sustainability initiatives, local business support, replacing aging facilities at Heather Farm Park with a modern aquatics and community center, and other important facilities and services, shall the City of Walnut Creek levy a half-cent sales tax, providing approximately $11 million annually for 10 years, requiring annual independent audits, citizens oversight, and all funds benefiting Walnut Creek? So that is a description of the measure. It's a general tax measure. As you can see, it describes the range of things that the city could potentially pay for with revenues. Would you vote yes to approve or no to reject that measure today? We see 57% saying they believe today, and we haven't given them any additional information about need. We've just asked them the question about what's their reaction. We see 57% saying that they would support this measure today, and 40% saying they would not. Very few people who sort of are undecided but lean yes or no, and just 2% are completely undecided even when we ask, well, do you lean yes or no? So we see a good level of support, certainly in a 50% environment. A general tax measure requires 50% of the voters plus one to pass, so simple majority. So we've put that line at 50%. And right now, at 57%, that's north of that five-point margin of error threshold needed to succeed. We asked them what are the main reasons they vote yes or no. So for the yes voters, what are the main reasons you're voting yes? For the no voters, what are the main reasons you're voting no? This was an open-ended question, so they could respond in any words they liked, and we grouped them for analysis. You can see for the yes voters, they talked a lot about, these are needed improvements. They did talk about crime prevention and public safety. They talked about general community benefit. They said worth the cost, improve facilities. So just a lot of kind of broad acceptance of, you're saying this is something you need, and, you know, it sounds like it'll be good for Walnut Creek, and so we support it. That's generally the kinds of responses people gave on the yes side. On the no side, you do see that people are, you know, largely concerned about taxes, maybe lack of trust in government spending, maybe feel the city doesn't need the revenue. So those no voters are really driven not by the particular things that are in the ballot question in terms of what the things are that the city pays for with your revenues, but rather concerned about the mechanism, the taxes, and that's their sort of top-of-mind We gave them a list of priorities here, and this was in randomized order. We've sorted them by the percent that gave the highest rating of a 10, very high priority. And it was on a scale from 1 to 10, and we asked them how high a priority this should be for the city of Walnut Creek. It's not specifically about what to do with the revenues from this measure. Rather, we asked them, what are your priorities for the city to be paying attention to for Walnut Creek? These are sorted, again, by very high priority, that 10 responds on a 1 to 10 scale. You can see public safety, crime prevention, 911 response, very much the highest in intensity, you know, and the highest rated priorities for the city. We also see addressing homelessness, water conservation, local business support are all of particular priority for the community in terms of what the city should be focusing on. A continuation of the same set, and this is everything that fell below that 50% threshold or level, and you see lots of different programs and efforts that are really close to that 50% in terms of what the city, the community is interested in. Pedestrian safety, parks and open space, disaster preparedness, economic recovery, housing affordability, GHG emissions. So a lot of issues that, when we ask people their priorities for Walnut Creek, and they can say they're all a top priority. So they did sort of pick and choose which ones were the highest priorities, and we do see less intensity on these, but still nearly a majority of the community saying they are interested in this and it should be a priority for the city. We also do see parks and open space. They're near the top of this chart at 48% saying it's a priority. I do want to point out that while some of the very specific projects or facilities that fall within that might not have as wide of an audience, maybe a narrower appeal in terms of people aware of those needs, we do see a general interest in continuing to support parks and open space programs. So certainly want to make sure that's placed in the perspective of they're interested in parks and open space, and as we saw earlier, not particularly aware of need, and that might be an area of opportunity. Following the priority exercise, we gave them additional information about why the city might consider placing a measure on the ballot. And this is really designed to help us understand, you know, we saw that they weren't particularly aware of need. This is really designed to help support what the city can do in terms of communicating with the public about why you might place this measure on the ballot. So we have a number, two slides of these. They're sorted by the total percent who said it was a convincing reason to support a measure for Walnut Creek. So the top one here, this measure will help make sure Walnut Creek remains a safe place to live. So really focusing on the public safety enhancements, maintaining and enhancing public safety services, including neighborhood and downtown police patrols, crime prevention investigation, 77% found that a convincing reason to be interested in a revenue measure. And then there's a bunch of things that are really focused on the sort of accountability, good governance, good fiscal management pieces. You know, Walnut Creek has families and seniors on fixed income, and by law, essential purchases are exempt from the sales tax, 64%. It's a regional shopping and recreation destination. This ensures visitors pay their fair share for using our facilities and services, 66%. And then accountability provisions at 68%, finding that a compelling reason or a convincing reason to be interested in a revenue measure. We do also see disaster preparedness as one of the sort of big programs that they're particularly interested in in terms of being prepared for emergencies and natural disasters. They're at the bottom of the slide. And these are sorted by the intensity here, very convincing. A continuation of that same set, so, you know, these are other pieces of information. All of them were helpful to the voters in terms of them saying, this is a piece of information that's useful for me as I think about whether the city should move forward with the revenue measure. So you can see sort of less intensity on these, but still, again, indicating that they do have a very broad interest in what, in terms of what they're interested in for the city to be talking about, thinking about, investing in with city revenues. So you see local business support, recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, funding improvements to make it safer to walk around Walnut Creek, things that help the city of Walnut Creek maintain the high-quality services, programs, and facilities that you currently have. Even talking about the Pool and Community Center, which we know is an area that had a very, a somewhat narrower audience in an ask, just asking about its relative priority. But when you start to connect that to why the city might need to invest in that facility, you do see people saying, well, that sounds like a convincing reason to me to need additional revenue for the city. After we gave them all of those pieces of information, we asked them again, do you think you'd vote yes or no on this revenue measure, this general tax measure for the city of Walnut Creek? The item on the left was the initial ask that you've already seen earlier in the presentation, and then on the right is once we gave them more information. So you can see it went from 57% yes to 60% yes, a small increase in that yes vote, really kind of reinforcing the description we had already given them of what this measure would do. And we see the no vote sort of staying the same, the undecided staying the same. They're resolute in their undecidedness at this time. Finally, we did also ask them, in an interest of understanding what are the vulnerabilities the city should be aware of as you consider whether or not you should move forward with a revenue measure, we wanted to give an assessment of what happens if there's a negative environment, if people start saying why you don't need this. And we put together a phrase, a paragraph here of sort of what opponents might say about the measure. Now's not the time. People are struggling. Raising taxes will drive people to spend money elsewhere. So really, really focusing not on the things that the city would fund, which we've seen are things that most of the community wants, but rather focusing on the sort of tax mechanism. And we do see some impact on support from an opposition statement, reducing support from 60% to 54%, increasing that no vote from 39 to 44. So we're still, you know, even in this environment where negative information might be, or negative statements might be getting said, 54% continue to support the measure above that 50% threshold. So some quick conclusions, and then I'll pause for questions or comment. First of all, we do see that a half-cent general sales tax for the city of Walnut Creek does consistently receive support above a majority and does appear viable for the November 2022 election. Your voters do remain optimistic about the city's direction, and they trust the city council. Crime is the top issue right now, but it's important to remember that that opinion environment could evolve over time. We can't really predict what's going to happen over the next few months, year, et cetera. But, you know, we do see that while they are very interested in what the city can do to really address, you know, their concerns about crime and safety, there's interest in supporting a broad range of programs and facilities that provide that high quality of life here at Walnut Creek. And we see that public information and thorough communication over the next six months will certainly be crucial as you prepare, if you decide to prepare to place a measure on the ballot. We think there's a lot of opportunity for the city to communicate to your voters and listen to your voters and talk about what are the things that you need, why you're considering it, and what you've done to show that you're a good steward of taxpayer dollars. With that, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. That was really interesting, useful information. Any questions for Ms. Labatt?
I just have a quick question. Could we go back to one of those earlier slides that showed the graph of what people's most interest was? Crime and safety was at the very top? I think it was like second or third slide, something like that.
This one?
Nope, nope. Back, back, back.
This one or the?
No, no. The very beginning.
The open-ended question. Very beginning. Getting there. Oh, nope. There it is. That one?
That was it. Yep, yep. Thank you.
This says there's a half-second lag, so I saw it, and it was too late.
Parking. Okay. So was there anything that didn't show, that didn't show up here that showed up in 2014, the last time this was done?
No. There really wasn't anything. You're asking if there's anything that didn't show up here that did show up back in 2015?
Right. Like you mentioned that crime and safety got almost no mentions in 2015, but now was number one. Was the reverse anywhere?
No. So the top issues back in that 2015 poll really were congestion and growth and overpopulation. There might have been some in the low single digits that I'm not recalling off the top of my head, but the significant mentions at that time were really traffic and growth.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Silva.
You mentioned when you were describing how the survey was done, that the question, that the categories were asked in randomized order. How does that work?
You mean logistically?
I mean, basically, the telephone person just sees the question. They don't get to pick the question, the order. It is being picked for them.
Right. Yes. So all of our surveys, the phone version is preprogrammed into what's called a CADDY system, where the interviewer will get a loaded, the questionnaire loaded up for them, one question at a time. They're not making choices about randomization. So in the instructions we provide for the programming, we say, "Randomize this set of questions," and they use, you know, a randomizing algorithm in their program. And we test that to make sure it's really coming up randomly. You know, we go through all of our program surveys a number of times to make sure that they work, they truly work the way we intended and asked them to do. Similarly, with the online version, which we tend to program mostly in-house ourselves, same thing. We set this list of questions. We'd like this to be random. The program that we use to program those surveys does that. There's a control in there. And again, we test to make sure they're really coming up randomly, so.
Okay. So there's no human control over it where we can flood all the questions or eliminate some of these?
No.
And the language that was tested, mentioned 10 years, a half-cent 10 years. Oftentimes, there's, those are the two variables. And was there any test of whether a shorter period of time was more, how it affected those who were not willing? Was the, it's too long, too much time commitment as a reason to vote no?
We didn't test different terms in the context of this poll. I would say that in the question about why are you voting yes or why are you voting no, very few people mentioned the term as their motivation to vote no. They were much likely to be saying, I just don't like to pay taxes. We don't need it, things like that.
My last question is that they were citing, or the, the no language that was presented included a statement that people will go shop elsewhere. But is that, and maybe you're not the right person to ask that, that assumes that it would make us the highest tax in their heads, and is that true or not?
I can speak to that. Currently, Walnut Creek has the lowest tax rate in Contra Costa County and one of the lowest in the region. And if this half-cent were pursued and ultimately approved, we would still be at the lower end of the scale in the, in the region.
Like our garbage rates. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Councilmember Darling.
I just wanted to go back to the one where you had the general parks and then the specific facilities. Make sure I understand that one. I think I've lost control here. I'm pushing, but nothing's happening. Yeah, oh, there we go. Thank you. This slide here. Correct? Yeah. So on this one, your interpretation, when you talk about parks and open space, and it has, you know, 48% putting it a fairly high priority, and then the specific facilities having a much lower rating, is that just because it's just a specific use amongst parks and open space?
Yeah. I think it's important to notice in this list that we didn't test a lot of any other specific facilities, right? We tested programs and sort of categories of spending, and we only got very specific in those parks and recreation facilities, which really was intentional to understand how much are people thinking about those particular things versus the broader categories that sort of feed into what's, what does Walnut Creek do with our revenues? And so what we see here, and we're only showing the eights, nines, and tens, but we did look at sort of farther down the list to try to ferret out, are we seeing something in there that says people don't want those things? And what we're seeing is just general lack of awareness about those things there, about the turf, you know, all-weather turf, the aquatics and facilities, Community Center Heather Farm. They're just less aware of the needs for those specifically. So they are prioritizing, along with many other things, supporting parks and open space facilities and programs generally. But I'd say that this is, what this says to me is that they're really just not as aware, the broad community is less aware of the need, even though there are members of the community that are extremely aware and enthusiastic about it, and you see those represented in the, in the 10 responses, right? The most intense. But the way I read this is that it's just indicative of a lot of people that aren't as aware of the specific need for those facilities.
So you're expecting, you know, for thing, other things where we just said better traffic control, if you polled specific projects, they would fall down?
You know, I don't, I don't want to go out on a limb of predicting what would have happened had we asked a question, but I'd say the, generally in polls like this, the more specific you get about not just the category, but the specific thing, the solution to maybe what they're seeing as a challenge or a thing that they're interested in, the less broadly appealing it might be, largely because the information just isn't as broadly known as the general interest in funding the program. So hypothetically, perhaps, but I don't want to go out on a limb on.
We're not going to go too far down the hypothetical road. I just want to understand that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other questions of Ms. Labatt? Okay. Any other questions of the city manager or staff? No? Then I think we'll go ahead and open the public comment. And this item again is, we've received the draft. We've received community survey results from Ms. Labatt, and I appreciate that. And if any member of the public wishes to provide public comments, please use the raise hand feature, press star nine. We're going to hear from speakers in the chamber first. You'll have two minutes. And group spokespeople are allowed 10 minutes in lieu of other members of the group speaking on the item. We trust that everyone will follow the rules, and we're going to accept in-person public comments first. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand or press star nine to indicate that you'd like to speak, and we'll get, we'll get to you after the folks that are in the chamber. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Keith Rohrlich. I am the president of Walnut Creek Soccer Club. Walnut Creek Soccer Club is the largest youth sports organization in Walnut Creek. We have a rich 50-year history in the community and a fabulous working relationship with city staff. Many on the council have or had kids that played for the club. We are thrilled with the results of the survey and in a show of unity, I wanted to personally thank the city council for including TERF at HF1 and 2 in the community survey. We too share your vision for the future of Walnut Creek. Should city council choose to move forward with a revenue measure this November, I wanted to let you know you have my full support and the support of the entire board. We will advocate in favor of the half-percent sales tax, and city council will have the club's full-throated support on the measure. We intend to work with the city and other stakeholders to help move the initiative forward. We appreciate our partnership and look forward to working closely with the city to make surf to turf a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rohrlich.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mark Joffe. I'm a resident of downtown Walnut Creek and a public policy analyst specializing in government finance. I am here to express my opposition to the one-half percent sales tax measure that's established last month. The city is not suffering a fiscal challenge that requires new general revenues. At the beginning of this fiscal year, Walnut Creek reported assigned and unassigned general fund balances totaling $33.6 million, or 46% of annual general fund expenditures. This is well above the 17% combined balance ratio recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association, who awarded you that prize earlier. The city also enjoyed general fund surpluses in fiscal years 2020 and 2021, despite the challenges of the pandemic, and has received $8.3 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds from the federal government. If the council thinks it is necessary to make a capital expenditure to upgrade the Heather Farm swimming pool or to improve the soccer fields, the most appropriate method is to place a bond measure on the ballot. Bonds are the proper tool for financing one-time capital expenditures that provide benefits over an extended period of time. The debt service burden from bonds fall on local property owners, who are often better equipped to shoulder additional taxes than renters, who are often struggling to afford clothes, gas, and school supplies for their kids, all of which will become more costly with an additional half-cent sales tax. Of course, bonds are harder to pass than sales taxes, which require only a simple majority. But I hope you have now seen that there is some opposition to the sales tax, especially if you look at the Nextdoor thread that I started, that you will recognize it also has a significant risk of failing in November. I note that the, that after the opposition language was included, you are not above 50% for the entire confidence interval, because the poll had a 4.9% error band, and that you'll drop this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joffe. Are there any other members in the chamber that would like to address the council on the survey results? Not seeing any, and so we'll go to Zoom.
Karen Majors is the first speaker.
Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening, Karen.
Great. Good evening. I can't hear you that well, but we'll go for it anyway, as long as you can hear me. First of all, my name is Karen Majors. I live at 15 Margaret Drive in the community of Walnut Creek, which is just one of those little unincorporated communities outside the city boundaries. But many of us do consider ourselves part of the Walnut Creek community. The recommendation to move forward with the next steps toward this half-cent sales tax proposal is a very, very important one. I would like to remind the city council and the city manager of the work of the Blue Ribbon Task Force that provided numerous recommendations in our report on Walnut Creek's future fiscal health. I do realize that it is over 10 years old, but there was a lot of heavy lifting and heavy review of information at that time, and it represented thousands of hours of work by over 15 engaged residents for over a year. And we all had very significant backgrounds in finance and related disciplines. One of our recommendations was a sales tax measure to address the city's aging infrastructure. The proceeds of such a tax can also be used for programmatic enhancement and upgrading. Most importantly, it taps the many non-residents, including myself, that visit Walnut Creek each day to shop and enjoy our open space and other recreational resources. These visitors use and impact city streets, parking parks, and other public services. It's just, it's an equalizer, as I look at it. A half-cent sales tax measure will put Walnut Creek on the par with sales tax rates in Pleasant Hill and Pittsburgh, and still well below Concord, Martinez, Antioch, Arinda, Richmond, and El Cerrito. So those are kind of my facts. My.
Thank you, Ms. Majors. Any other public speakers?
Yes. Another hand raised is Justin P.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay. Apologies for the delay. And I'll be brief. My name's Justin Pager. I am a resident of Walnut Creek. I've lived in Walnut Creek for about 11 years now. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there this evening, so having to join here virtually. But I am the vice president of the Walnut Creek Surf Organization. Keith was just there. You know, as a resident, I do support the measure, and just wanted to, to make sure that, to state the opportunity, to take this opportunity, just to state that, thank you for including the TERF statement in the survey. We're very supportive. We're going to work with all of our constituents to see that happen. Of course, here, you know, families within Walnut Creek, I believe about 80% of Walnut Creek families have a, those families with children. I have a child who goes through Walnut Creek Surf or Walnut Creek Soccer Club, so it's a deep part of the community, and we're committed to working together, working with the council, should the measure proceed, to see TERF on the ballot and see that as one of the priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pager.
No additional hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to the council for any other questions of staff. I had a few. To the city manager, there was a comment made by Mr. Joffe about an unassigned general fund balance of over $33 million. Can you respond or speak to that, please?
Yes. I believe the figures he was referencing were assigned and unassigned. The unassigned is the portion that, at the end of the year, that was effectively the coming in under budget, which is always a good thing to do. So I welcome having unassigned fund balance, because it means we did better than what our plan is, which is really always our goal. As far as assigned fund balance, we're very aware of the targets set by the Government Finance Officers Association, which sets a minimum of 20% reserve of the operating budget. But if you look at the recommendations in more detail, that's the minimum, and there are various scenarios for why you would want to have more. So yes, I agree. Walnut Creek is in good fiscal shape. And what this measure is about, should your council choose to pursue it, is about maintaining and protecting the high quality of life that our residents have come to expect and enjoy, because there are major infrastructure, facility, and program and service needs that were discussed this evening and could be discussed further into the future. So while aware of those targets, the percentages off the top of my head sounded reasonably accurate. I would take Mr. Joffe's word for it. I think he's done his research on, on the budget. But yes, we look to exceed the minimum targets that are set by external bodies.
And then there's a long list of items, obviously, that we're hold on, and we haven't quantified necessarily all those items, but just rough order of magnitude or scale in terms of some of the capital and operational items. What are we talking about there?
Well, it varies. And remember this, if we pursue this, the intention at this point in time would be to pursue a general tax. And so what this poll was about is testing the various areas that may be of interest to the community. Obviously, one of the big items is a potential new community center and swim center at Heather Farm. That is one of our main facilities that is at the end of its useful life and in need of replacement. Those facilities were funded, and others through bond proceeds issued over 50 years ago to help build those and a lot of our infrastructure that we've enjoyed for the last 50 years. Obviously, some of the other things that were polled that could be fairly noteworthy in terms of expenditures, there were library hours. Obviously, turf fields was discussed a fair bit this evening and certainly acknowledged by members of the public, as well as potential public safety enhancements and potential sustainability efforts. So if this were, measure were to be passed, we would then create a very detailed spending plan thereafter, once we know what is of interest to the community.
Okay. And I think that was all I had for now. How about Councilmember Wilk?
Quick question. Thank you very much, Dan. So I just want to make sure, in terms of the revenues and what we're getting annually right now, we are in fiscal health to the extent that we are able to maintain the services that we currently enjoy. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yes and no. I mean, I want to highlight that we've gone through a few tough years here, and the reason we're in sound fiscal shape is because your council made some very difficult decisions the past two years. You know, we cut several million dollars out of our budget. That was not something that was taken easily or lightly, but doing so kept us in sound fiscal shape, whereas we have seen there are examples throughout the country of other municipalities that didn't make the difficult decisions and paid the price later by becoming fiscally insolvent, because they relied on short-term tricks and measures in order to balance their budgets. So this council and councils prior has a long history of fiscal stewardship and being willing to make balanced and well-rationed, yet difficult decisions when needed. So by no means has it been easy, and by no means do I want to suggest that we can guarantee that we can maintain everything going into the future. As we've just seen in the past two years, there are a lot of unknowns, and that's part of the reason why we do have a fund balance that we discussed earlier with money in the bank, effectively rainy day funds. And we did plan to use some of those rainy day funds during the last two years as we addressed our budgets. Fortunately, some of the revenues came in higher than were anticipated. We still had a drop, and it just didn't drop as much as what was anticipated. And then certainly, some of the federal stimulus funds helped offset the need to use some of those reserves as well.
So based upon that, are the cuts that we made, is that sustainable in the long term, the way that we cut the budget to be able to make sure that we are going to be fiscally solvent over the last few years?
Well, there are multiple ways to answer that, and what I would suggest is that it depends on the service levels that we want to provide. And so, you know, we scaled back some of the services that we're providing these last couple of years. And so if the community is satisfied with lower service levels, if we're able to produce, but, you know, I suspect in your council seeing this already, you know, we're having some difficulty staying up with all the demands that are currently before us. In addition to having reduced staff, we're seeing some vacancy rates and whatnot. And as we just reviewed council priorities a few weeks ago, we're having to delay some. So yes, we did make reductions that, from a fiscal perspective, are sustainable, at least for the, in the immediate term and for the foreseeable future, not knowing what the future holds. But it really comes down to the level of service and the quality of life that folks want in Walnut Creek.
Okay. And then my final question then would be, and I think I know the answer based on what you just said, but the amount of revenues that we have been bringing in typically on an annual basis, would that be enough to be able to rebuild, upgrade, and take care of these facilities and all of these different things that we're talking about, based on what we are currently bringing in revenues?
No. And that's been a big shift in the city budget over the last decade. Up until the Great Recession, roughly beginning in 2009, prior to then, you know, there were very large year-end balances for several years that prior city councils were able to put into the bank and save up to help fund new facilities or do major overhauls of other facilities. That really changed with the Great Recession. Not only were budget cuts enacted then, the reserves were unable, we were unable to save for these types of facilities. So to some extent, you know, and we've highlighted this, that's the reason infrastructure has been one of your council priorities going back to 2017, is we effectively do have an infrastructure deficit. So I don't think, based on current budgetary trends, we would be able to save our way to providing for these facilities.
Okay. Thank you. I lied. I have one more question. But just for the record, how are our pension reserves?
Our pension reserves are healthy. Your council took very noteworthy action, and I would suggest were probably the envy of the state of many other cities. We do have, based, last time I checked, not too long ago, we have about $27.5 million set aside for future pension liabilities. That won't solve the problem, but that will go a long way towards easing the problem.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Please on the spot.
Mayor Protam Silva.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation and the work. It's enlightening and informative. The, I want to, we're circling on some of these fiscal health. I appreciated one of the former members of the Blue Ribbon Task Force on Fiscal Health calling in. While the, what the work was done post-recession, most of the recommendations were not post-recession specific. They were fiscal health and fiscal stability specific. One of them had to do with reserve levels, and I believe one of the things we did was increase our reserve levels in specific response to some of their recommendations. So our reserve levels, you said, were higher than the minimum of 20%. Can you describe what some of those reserve categories are? Because it's not all just in one big pot of money. I mean, it's in a, it's all in the bank, but it's designated for different things.
Yes. I can certainly reference a few, and I may need to call on our finance folks for additional support, depending on much detail. But we do have a fiscal emergency reserve. We have a general emergency reserve, think a natural disaster of some sort, you know, fiscal reserve for, for big changes in the economy, a downturn, a recession, depression, that sort of thing. We also have money set aside for potential liability, and we have other smaller reserves for workers' comp and that sort of thing. So there are multiple categories for our reserve for specific uses. And then ultimately, at the end of the day, if there were a huge disaster of some sort, we have the ability to reallocate those for the type of emergency needed. But we plan for those based upon, in many cases, actuarial studies in which they do a thorough analysis and make recommendations for what those targets should be for some of those reserves.
One of the things we've been doing with our unassigned surpluses is been setting them aside. Can you describe the last couple of years, what we've been setting them aside for?
Yes. A few different things. One was for fiscal emergencies and general emergencies. And then also, the last couple of years, we've set aside money for facilities, replacement and infrastructure. And just to give you a sense of scale, going back also to Councilmember Wilk's question about how much, long would it take to save? It's been either the last two or, I believe it's now three years, we've set aside money in the facilities reserve, and we're up to just under $11 million after about three years of savings. So, you know, if you look at the current estimate that replacing the pool, the swim center, and the community center at Heather Farm is about $60 million, we're looking at a really long time to save before we would be able to fund such a facility. And during that timeframe, we know costs are only going to go up, so we would be forever chasing that elusive target.
And the condition of the aquatics facility in particular is 50 years old. The conditions are, it's at risk that it would just be permanently shut down, because you would need to rebuild it in order to get it working, if I'm remembering what some of, many of the reports said.
Yes. You are, you are correct, that it is certainly, it's been limping along at the end of its useful life for quite some time and is at risk of, of not working any longer or having a major failure. And that is one of the many reasons why your council prioritized that facility from your parks your future effort as being the top of the four facilities to be replaced.
So one of the comments was also in relation to the eight, $8.3 million in American Rescue Plan funds. What are those, can those be used for? And there's a time limit on it as well.
Yes. And those rules change frequently, and so from the time we've reported on those initially, there have been some updates. The latest, as I recall, they have to be committed by 2024 and spent by 2026. The categories have varied. There's been a bit of a loosening in terms of what they can be spent on compared to when the. of a loosening in terms of what they can be spent on compared to when the initial rules came out. But generally speaking, it's to backfill for revenue loss or for key city operations and programs. And, you know, we used approximately, we budgeted approximately $4 million to help offset what was projected to be $22 million of budget gaps over two fiscal years. And then more recently, we allocated $2 million to help address the organized retail theft activities that have occurred, most notably in November, but even prior to then. And we have $2 million that is currently unallocated. That will be subject to future discussion about how to best put that to use.
My next question has to do with the choices that we discussed at length in the summer and in early in the fall about the alternatives. And just for clarification, revenues from a sales tax can be used for both building infrastructure as well as for funding programs.
That's correct.
But revenues, a bond, can only be used for building something, correct?
If you're referring to a general obligation bond, that's correct.
So if we were to, we made a conscious decision, as I recall, not to pursue a bond, one, because of its inflexibility, because it can only be used for things, not the programs in the things. The second was because it was a, the longest-term debt burden and significant cost to the community. Is it correct to say that only owners of property, well, only owners of property pay for the bond measure, but don't they pass it on, businesses pass it on and increasing costs of goods and services, and owners of rental property pass it on to their tenants?
I would think that's a very likely scenario, and I would just also add, in terms of a difference between a general obligation bond and a sales tax, the general obligation bond would only be proper taxed to property owners in Walnut Creek. A sales tax, you know, anyone who shops in Walnut Creek would pay that, and roughly 50% of the sales tax in Walnut Creek is generated by people from outside the area, people who visit. And many of our facilities and our programs and services are used by people outside of Walnut Creek because we are a regional destination. So there would be some sharing of the funding as well as sharing of the benefit of the enhanced services.
So the, all of the users would be contributing to the, to the payments?
There would be a much wider array of folks who would be contributing to the payment, that's correct.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Back, Councilmember Haskew. So we're here tonight to receive the community survey results. No action item required. The survey was done in January, and we've received the results. And what are the next steps?
Yes, Madam Clerk, if we could pull up the PowerPoint, there was one last slide that outlines the next steps. Yeah, so, you know, this is really, the beginning of the process was just to get a read on where the communities may be at, at this point in time. It's not necessarily a prediction of where people may be in November of 2022. It's an indicator of where folks are at. So should we continue on this path, really, we will be going on a listening tour, sharing information with folks in the community and hearing from them about what's important, what they think the city should focus on, and how that may impact the potential for a revenue measure in the fall. And then ultimately, as you can see, it's, I should know this date, but it's in early August that the council has to decide and vote whether or not to put this on the ballot. Most likely, not to go right up to the very end, we would be bringing that decision to your council in July to decide. And then from that point in time, we would, the listening tour would be wrapped up, and then it's really up to the community to engage and decide how they would like to proceed from the August to November timeframe.
Thank you. That's helpful. And I want to turn to my colleagues now and get their feedback and comments on the survey results and the next steps. And why don't we start with Councilmember Haskew?
Thank you, Mayor. I was also on that Blue Ribbon Task Force 11 years ago and learned a lot about how city finances work and, and how if you look at the bottom line, it looks like there is a lot of money, but it, there isn't a lot of money at the end of the, the balance sheet because, because they are earmarked for many other things and require a great deal of additional effort and, and leave us exposed for dangers that we have intentionally anticipated are ours. We've also spent a lot of time, since I've been on council, looking at how to use our money effectively all along the way. We had trainings in whether we could, should defer work on, on assets and, and repaving of roads and what the costs would be. Sometimes it, it takes more money, you, you save money by not doing the, the best job you should be doing, but it costs you a lot more money to fix the problem when the problem becomes not a choice. It becomes, there's, there's also the fact that we have an opportunity right now, because of the efforts of our, your parks, your future, to really take the information that they developed and, and make our, our future assets fit current and future needs, and also to bring up the standards for things like ADA issues and making them fit what we really want, not having big rooms where we want little rooms and little rooms where we want big rooms. So I think that this is a really great opportunity for our community to look at, to look at where we're going in the future. And rather than kick the can, it's a former council member's favorite, favorite word, rather than kick the can down the road, we can catch that can, and hopefully it's tomatoes, and we can make spaghetti sauce that really covers Walnut Creek as in, yet again, really creative use of our, our resources. So I could probably put more analogies in there and confuse everybody, but I will stop.
That's great. Councilmember Wilk.
Right, thank you. And this was all really interesting. Thank you so much for the presentation and the, and the survey that you did. It's all, all really enlightening, especially how crime prevention and public safety has risen to a significant percentage of respondents from barely a blip seven years ago. And I appreciate those that participated in this survey, and really gives us a lot to think about. One thing that's become evident is that while Walnut Creek is fiscally sound for our annual requirements to maintain the city and have set aside a pension trust fund, if residents want to upgrade 50-year-old facilities that have outlived their useful life expectancy, as well as enhanced safety measures for children and our community at large, we don't have the revenue, nor are we expecting additional revenues from our current sources. I want to personally thank the previous city councils and residents who decided 60 years ago to fund and pay for the facilities that we've all enjoyed for the last 50 years. I, I believe some of our residents have truly enjoyed them for all of those 50 years. And we're seeing more and more people that are moving into Walnut Creek and loving Walnut Creek for what it, what our, what our leaders and residents did over half a, a half a century ago to give them those services. If we as residents want to see our next generations here also have those same types of current and upgraded facilities, then we'll have some hard decisions to make. Costs continue to go up in construction, personnel, programs, and safety. Meanwhile, sales tax revenues go down due to more online purchasing. That's a whole nother discussion. And, and less in-store purchases. We just get less tax revenues from them. This isn't sustainable. And cutting back on costs, which as the city manager mentioned, we've already done at a minimum to sustain what we currently have. If we simply said, if we want to be able to enjoy this for the next decades, then we, we have to make these decisions. And before, I do want to say that before people instantly react one way or another, I'd ask them to consider, what do we want for the future of Walnut Creek? Do we want to have deteriorating facilities and programs for the next generations, which as Councilmember Haskew just mentioned, will require ever more higher costs to maintain, or potentially just shut down, as we've seen some of our older facilities have to do from time to time? Or do we want to have the continued quality of life that we've enjoyed for over the last 50 years, and thanks to the vision of the residents from the 1960s, and move forward to provide current and future residents with more safety, more programs, upgraded facilities, and a quality of life to take Walnut Creek and its residents well into the mid-21st century? These are the questions that we'll all be discussing over the next few months.
Good comments. Thank you. Councilmember Darling?
Thank you, and thank you for all the effort that went into this. I just have to say that what you heard in the survey closely matches what I heard during the campaign a year and a half ago. People move to Walnut Creek because they really expect a high quality of life. They're not here to play soccer on rundown fields and to have, you know, they're interested in having a place where they feel safe, where their kids have lots of activities. And so it really matches what I heard when I was out on the campaign trail. The other thing, since I've joined city council, since I'm the newest, I was pleasantly surprised when I got here, how fiscally sound the city is compared to a lot of the other, you know, I spent my career in government, and I have seen places that are not in very good fiscal shape. And the city has reserves, they have lots of checks and balances on spending. They go through and do a good job every year, making sure that we are not wasting money and that we have the appropriate reserves. So we're, we're fiscally sound, we have people that want to hear, you know, that want the good quality of life. And I, for one, am looking forward to the next couple of months of listening and further refining as we talk to our city residents and our city visitors and see what they're interested in. And I think this is an exciting opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you again to our city team and the consulting team for this work. Thank you also to the public who provided comments this evening because those are very helpful. I think I'm going to start with a phrase, "We are fiscally healthy, but we are not wealthy." And you would need to be wealthy to rebuild 50-year-old aging community facilities. You would need to be wealthy to take care of, to create consistent library hours, which we can no longer do because they were originally funded, did my, am I on? They were originally funded through a tax measure approved by the voters. If we want to replace aging infrastructure, and we know we have the need, and if we want to continue to provide the services that make Walnut Creek the place that is the envy of so many other communities, and communities across the country as well, then if that's what we need, then we need to find a way to fund both services and facility infrastructure improvements. And we are fiscally healthy because we have ample good reserves that allowed us, it was a place we could go two years ago, when I'll call it the COVID crash. I mean, 45 days, we were looking for $12 million and another $10 million from a subsequent year. It was a, a potential crash. You cannot bank on the federal government coming forward with rescue monies every other year for local communities. We have no debt. We have a pension set aside. We, we have a policy that says we use one-time money for one-time expenditures, which is why we have taken our one-time surpluses at the end of each year and put them toward infrastructure or security measures and not toward running programs. And we made, when we, it was necessary, we made those painful cuts, both in the Great Recession and then two years ago, and because we know how, that it is, it is a necessity to live within our means. I'm looking forward, like my colleagues have said, to continuing this dialogue with the community and hearing more about their perceptions of all of this and where they want us to go for the next 50 years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for those comments. I echo and concur with them. I've been on the council now for three years. Like many of you and many of the members of the community, I'm not generally in favor of taxes, but I also understand that there's a need for taxes sometimes, that if we want to have paved roads, and if we want to have a high quality of life, if we want to have a swimming facility, with the one we have now is, is 60 years old, if we want to have turf fields for our kids to play on, if we want to have extra library hours, if we want to do these things, you know, I continue to be concerned about the lack of preparedness on, from a disaster standpoint, from this community, and that concerns me from a fire standpoint, from an earthquake standpoint. I think that there's, there's a lot that needs to be done here. So I haven't weighed in in support of pursuing a revenue measure, any revenue measure really, since I've been on the council, but I do see the need for this one because I've served on the Finance Committee for two years now. I see how the city is fiscally sound, has healthy reserves, lives within its means, but doesn't have an extra five, you know, $50 to $100 million laying around. That's just not the realities of government. And, and our, you know, we were fortunate that the people that went before us, the council and the residents, had foresight, were willing to tax themselves so that we were able to be the beneficiaries of the open space and these facilities. And, you know, the torch has been passed to a new generation now. And I, to me, a failure is not an option on this. I think the, these are two, the types of things we're talking about are too important to what make up the character of this community to just not do anything, I think, because that's what the option is. And I, so I, I appreciate that there, there is opposition, but I would also hope that there's active listening, which is what we're willing to do. And I would hope that people would come with an open mind, an objective mind, get educated on the facts, and not come in with a predisposed position to be opposed to something without really gathering all the information, which is what I'm committed to doing. So I thank you, Sarah, for the survey results, and thank you staff for the information on the budget. And I think with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is our introduction to the housing and safety element update and review of the draft community engagement plan.
Waiting for, have a consultant who'll be sharing her screen with the PowerPoint. So give us a second here while we go through our Zoom machinations. Can you hear me? Oh. All right, there, there. And switch it to presentation view, and we'll get going here. There we go. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I, as you know, I'm Andrew Smith, I'm head of long range and transportation planning for the City of Walnut Creek and our community development department. And I am here tonight, actually really just to introduce a presentation. I'll be handing it over in a moment. This is the first time I believe we've actually been in front of the full council for our work on the updates to both the housing and safety elements of our general plan. And this is a, a project we'll be working on for the next year or so, a very important one, of course, as you all know. Go to the next slide, want to make some introductions here. So the, the guy on the left without a mask, that's me, in case you forgot what I look like, without a mask. And I'm hoping I did not use that joke during the HCD committee, so I apologize if I did to the vice, the Mayor Protem and Councilmember Darling. So this is a fairly large undertaking. And as with, you know, large undertakings such as this, we do commonly, of course, bring in expert consultant help to do the brunt of the work for this. And this is, you know, of course, no exception. However, you're probably aware, there has been, of course, a bit of transition with staffing in our department. And so we've also brought in a, a specific consultant to handle a lot of the day-to-day project management. a lot of the day-to-day project management work that will be, that directly assists me. And so that's actually Nancy Brigado with Brigado Planning. She actually, prior to being in the private sector, had almost 30 years in the public sector, working in, for cities and in city planning, and so she brings a unique perspective to this and has been exceedingly helpful. Our primary consultant doing the work of the housing element is Harrison Associates, and the, we have two leads, because there's, of course, two elements being worked on. Hita Mosesman is the lead for the housing element update, and she'll actually be giving the presentation in a moment, and then Darren Neufeld is the head for the safety element update. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Hita Mosesman.
Thank you very much, Andy. We are the mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Hita Mosesman. I'm Vice President of Community Development and Housing with Harrison Associates, and I'm here this evening to present some information on the housing and safety element updates. To start, we're going to sort of review the housing element and start with sort of explaining what a housing element is. It really is the primary planning document to address housing needs in the city. It is part of the city's general plan as pursuant to state law. The general plan, I like to say, is like a book, and the elements are like chapters, and the housing element in particular focuses on the housing needs of residents of all income levels. It implements the city's vision for itself as it relates to housing, and it provides a concrete plan on how to meet local needs in the community. The State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, as I'll refer to them during the presentation, is required to review and certify the document. The housing element contains a number of sections, and those sections really are sort of dictated and mandated by state law. These are things like the community profile that includes demographic information, such as population and income, outlines special needs populations, that's defined by law as well, and that would include groups like seniors, persons with disabilities, large families, and unhoused persons and families. There is a robust section on housing needs in the community based on a number of data sources and public input, and identifies challenges and opportunities related to those needs. One specific and important section of the housing element is the list of potential housing sites or the site inventory that is a very specific list of properties and identifies the number of units by income level for each site as well. The housing constraints section provides information to barriers or constraints to housing development, or things that cause delays to housing development. Those can be either governmental, like zoning regulations or development standards, or they can be caused by market conditions, such as high land costs and labor and materials shortages. There's also a view of the last housing element cycle, which was the fifth cycle, to assess the efficacy of the programs and actions taken by the city, and it looks at the number of units that were actually built at different income levels. There's a new requirement, required section this time around called the Fair Housing Analysis that I will address in the next slide, as it does have a lot of requirements and sections to it. And finally, there's a housing plan that contains the goals, objectives, policies, and specific actions the city would take to facilitate housing development in the community. So focusing on the affirmatively furthering fair housing, as it's technically called, requirement section of the housing element, this really, really zeroes in on social equity and environmental justice issues in the community and really provides an assessment of those. It looks at things like fair housing complaints and enforcement, as well as outreach capacity. It looks at data points on segregation and integration, disparities in opportunities for housing, disproportionate housing needs and displacement risk, and racially concentrated areas of not only poverty, but also affluence, and it looks at environmental hazards that affect housing in the community as well. The housing element's being updated primarily because it's required to be updated every eight years by state law, but it allows for state law changes that occur, and we had quite a number of them last five years or so, to be integrated into the housing element to update it. It really shows how the city will meet the housing demand based on growth. It allows the city to continue to be eligible for state funding for housing, and particularly affordable housing, and there's been much more of that in the last couple of years. And it really is a great opportunity for the community to be very involved in the housing planning process. So the housing element update has a specific process with certain milestones, again guided by state law. It usually kicks off with community outreach, which is a subject of tonight's meeting as well, to obtain input from the community on housing needs and opportunities. There's a large amount of data analysis that is conducted to help draft the housing element that incorporates that input from the community and stakeholders, to prepare a draft for the Planning Commission and Council to review and accept for transmission to HCD for their required review period. Our experience in Southern California has indicated that there are two to three rounds of review of the housing element typically, and that is submitting the housing element to HCD. They come back with comments or findings, and those comments and findings are addressed, and they get to review the document again. Once the findings are addressed, the state officially certifies the document, and the city continues to be eligible for funding. So the number of units that are contained in the housing element that the city must plan for is not really dictated by the city itself or alone. That number really originates, which, and that number I'll refer to as the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or the RENA. That number comes first from the State of California, the Department of Housing and Community Development, who looks at housing needs regionally and allocates a number to each association of governments or council of governments, in your case, ABAG. And ABAG had an allocation of 441,176 units. ABAG then develops a methodology to allocate to each city and county within the region, and based on that methodology, Walnut Creek received an allocation of 5,805 units. We've conducted some of the demographic research in preparation for the housing element draft and to help inform the community engagement process, and we wanted to share some of those results with you tonight. The population of the city is about 71,000 residents. There's been about 10% growth in the last 20 years, which has generally been a slightly lower growth rate than, excuse me, Contra Costa County and the Bay Area as a whole. Walnut Creek's growth rate is the dark blue line at the bottom in the chart to the right. The middle line is the Bay Area as a whole, and the green line on top would be Contra Costa County. In terms of housing stock, the city has 34,000 units generally. About 40% of these are single-family, with the remaining 60% being multifamily, and the group of type, housing types that has experienced the most growth in the last 10 years has been multifamily projects of five units or more. Looking at renters versus owners, it's about 65% owners, 35% renters, which is consistent with Contra Costa County, but the rate of ownership in Walnut Creek and the county is significantly higher than that in the Bay Area in general. Historical rent growth is something important to look at in terms of the cost of housing. There's been almost a 60% increase in rent growth over the last 10 years in Walnut Creek. This actually tracks higher than Contra Costa County in the Bay Area. As you can see, Contra Costa County was about 45%. In terms of his home value or home prices, Zillow reports that home values in Walnut Creek have doubled in the last 10 years, which is generally consistent with the county and the Bay Area as a whole. One important data point that we look at in the housing element is what's called cost-burdened households, and a household is considered cost-burdened when over 30% of gross income of that household is spent on housing, and it's considered severely cost-burdened if over 50% of the gross income is spent on housing. So looking at owners versus renters, what we found is about 31% of ownership households spend more than 30% of their income on their housing costs, and of that amount, 14% spend over 50% of their annual income severely cost-burdened. With renters, the proportion of cost-burdened is higher, 43% of renter households are cost-burdened, with 24% of that number extremely cost-burdened, spending more than 50% of their gross income on housing costs. And because we're talking about income, it's important to take a look at what the income growth has been as we've looked at rent growth and home price growth. In 2010, the median income of Walnut Creek was about $81,000. 2019, it's $120,000, which represents almost a 50% increase over this 10-year period. However, that increase lags behind the increases in rent, 58%, and home value at over 100% over that same time period. I won't get into too much detail about this table, but I wanted to explain that your allocation of 5,805 units is not just units in total or in general, it's broken out between different income categories based on the need in terms of those income categories in the community. So that would be anything from very low income to what's called above moderate income, and those households are generally considered, or equivalent to, market-rate units. A good visual representation is in this chart, so about 60% of your RENA allocation is for affordable units, and about 40% is for market-rate or above moderate units. And at this point, I'd like to pause to see if there are any questions from the council on the housing element update information.
Thank you, Ms. Mosesman. That was very helpful information. Any questions of Ms. Mosesman? Yes, Councilmember Haskew.
I just have one little question, and that's the slide before this, one or the one before that. I think it's the one before that. For the extremely low, very low income, no, 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 we have 1,600, almost 1,700 housing units. Could you describe what they expect the housing unit to look like for that, for that, I mean, what's the difference between low income and extremely low? Do they get like a postage stamp-sized apartment, or they get essentially the same kind of facilities? Would you please describe them for me, too?
Sure. So it's not about, you know, the design or the appearance, really, it's more focused on what it costs to rent or buy. The majority of affordable housing units that are developed today are rental units. And so basically, those rents need to be at a rate that doesn't exceed about 30% of someone's income. So if you're looking at a very low-income household, and we put the income ranges here, so very low income would be considered in Walnut Creek based on county area median income of $125,000 about for a household. Very low income would be considered a household that makes about $63,000 a year in gross income or less. So the rents would have to be affordable to, so that the rent would not exceed 30% of the income coming into that household per month. Does that, does that answer the question?
Not exactly. I mean, the rents are, it could be renting to my kid who only makes $50,000 a year, and it's, you know, a third of my regular house. It's, is there some kind of standard for what these housing, these different gradients of income, is acceptable housing for those?
I can tell you that, and there aren't specific requirements that you're referring to, except to say that the majority of low-income and very low-income units that are developed in the state are done so using low-income housing tax credits. And there is a state committee that allocates those to projects, and they're competitively scored for the most part, and they do have design standards associated with them, and depending on how close they've come to those design standards, they score higher or lower for that competitive process, because the funding is very large. So if, if the unit is developed with sort of green building technology, they score higher. However, in terms of how big the unit is, that is not really as much of a consideration. It's more about what the resulting rent will be. So as you can imagine, the units, because construction costs are what they are, units are going to be constricted by size based on cost that will result in the rent that would be charged to the household. I wanted to also add that low and very low-income units, as well as some moderate-income units, generally have income restrictions and covenants recorded against the property that make them affordable for a certain duration of time. That could be 45 to 55 years. So there are certain requirements about the rent restrictions on those units.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also just add, as it applies to basically meeting our state requirements through the housing element, and this is really kind of a simplified answer, but essentially, we have, the housing element has to demonstrate through its housing, housing opportunity sites analysis, that the housing sites that we say meet the requirements for the affordability levels, they have to be essentially zoned to certain minimum densities. And again, this is a really simplified explanation, but state law essentially assumes that density equals affordability. Now, of course, that's not always the case in reality, but there is a correlation there. And so, and that combined with various affordable and fair housing policies that would be included in the housing element is, in general, how we would address that, and then, as Ms. Mosesman mentioned, in terms of tracking our progress to the construction of the actual units, it's essentially, are they income-restricted or not? There's a little bit of variation in that for like ADUs and stuff, but in general, it's, they have to be income-restricted.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions for Ms. Mosesman? I think we're good.
So next, we wanted to talk about the safety element update, and as Andy pointed out, my colleague Darren Neufeld is here as the safety element lead to answer any questions, but I'd like to present a little bit of information. Like the housing element, it's a required element of your city's general plan, so again, a chapter in the book that is the general plan, and its purpose is really to identify and reduce risks of natural and man-made disasters, such as fire, flood, earthquake, climate change. It contains goals and policies, reducing, with the aim of reducing the risk of these disasters, preventing these disasters, and ensuring community preparedness. And really, the goal is looking at preventing or reducing death, injury, and property damage in the community to ensure emergency care and response, to plan for hazardous materials and wastes, and where appropriate, address crime reduction. And so because the safety element addresses these sort of climate and hazards in the community, it does touch on environmental justice issues as well, like the affirmatively fair housing section as well. It also includes mapping of seismic and geological hazards, as well as evacuation routes, water supply requirements, minimum road widths, and clearances around structures. And the reason for the update really is a law that passed that says that when you update your housing element, you must review and incorporate new information on disasters like flood, fire, and climate hazards into the safety element. And at this point, I wanted to pause to see if there were any questions on the safety element, and again, as I referenced, Darren Neufeld is here to answer those questions.
That's great. It looks like we have some questions. Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much for the overview of this. As we seek during the process of the safety element to identify, I guess, resident, basically, we're looking at homes or residential properties that are more prone to natural disasters, is that, so that would include... Is that, so that would include, you had the long list, drought, earthquake, but also wildland fires, urban interfaces in some of our residential neighborhoods? Will that also include recommendations in the Safety Element as to ways we could help to ensure or better protect those neighborhoods?
Yes, it will. It certainly will. It will include policies, goals, and implementation measures to do just that for all hazards where relevant. So you had mentioned wildfires. So there will definitely be policies in place to protect neighborhoods from the threat of wildfire and urban fire, as one example.
Okay, thank you.
I had just more of a process one. I understand that the housing element needs to be updated every seven years, and we're on the process to do that by January. Why is the Safety Element combined with that?
As he just said, there's new state law that when you update either a housing element or a local hazard mitigation plan, you have to also update your Safety Element in conjunction with that. And Safety Elements have to be updated regardless, no less than every eight years. So they're just, they're almost trailing parallel with the housing element updates.
Okay. And that's a relatively new law, then, with the Safety Element update?
Yeah, it is. I believe it was 20, in effect, last year? Or no, sorry, last few years, relatively new, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. Are we done with the presentation, or is there more?
There's a little more. We have one last section on the Community Engagement Plan. So you and your agenda packet have a draft and community engagement plan. We've been in the process of obtaining input from the HCD Committee, as well as the Planning Commission. Those, the input has not been synthesized into the document to date, but we are seeking input also from the City Council. We wanted to first present what the requirements for community outreach are for the different elements that are being updated. So the California Government Code requires cities or counties updating their housing element to conduct a diligent effort to achieve public participation of all economic segments in the community. Further, HCD, the State Department of Housing Community Development, also issued guidance on this community engagement, requiring that the housing element needs to clearly describe how all of these economic segments of the community were engaged, how the engagement was implemented, the groups that were invited, and the comments received, and the participation, as well as ongoing efforts throughout the housing element process to ensure that engagement continued. Engagement needs to also include fair housing to identify any issues with fair housing that need to be addressed as part of the housing element. And again, as fair housing addresses environmental hazards, it really does overlap with environmental justice issues in terms of identifying and mitigating those. On the Safety Element, what's required is a Safety Committee, which is a committee of city leaders and professionals in the safety field, as well as consultations with other entities, such as the Fire Protection District and the Flood Control District, to be, to really sit as technical experts to advise on the updating of the Safety Element. But also, there is meaningful public engagement with the community at large to identify issues to be mitigated as part of the update as well. And because it also, like the fair housing section of the housing element, it addresses hazards in the community, it does overlap with environmental issues and equity issues as well. In terms of the draft plan itself, it really is a comprehensive process of engaging, as we just touched on with state law, all economic segments of the community to ensure that all have a way to participate in the planning of housing. The outreach methods that we are, that we've proposed as part of the Community Engagement Plan include specific web pages for the Housing Element and Safety Element separately to dispense of information. We would have separate surveys for each element. A city would e-blast out information to all of the interest lists that the city holds. There would be multiple social media posts, announcements at Planning Commission and City Council meetings about ways and opportunities to engage in this process of updating these elements, as well as regional resources and collectives of cities and counties coming together to obtain input. The engagement leaders as part of this effort include city staff, the city's consultants, the Safety Committee, as I talked about, as well as the Planning Commission and the City Council. The meeting dates and types that are proposed in the plan before you are Planning Commission and City Council introductory sessions. The Planning Commission session was last Thursday, and tonight is the City Council introductory session. There are two workshops, public workshops scheduled in March and April that would consist of live polling and an opportunity for the community to provide input on the processes. We have scheduled four stakeholder focus group meetings as part of the plan. Those would be to, those are to be determined as we identify those stakeholder groups that would be the focus, and we coordinate schedules to determine appropriate meeting dates. Two public Safety Committee meetings as well. And as that committee is appointed, those meeting dates would be determined. And then finally, two Planning Commission and City Council meetings or hearings each for the draft and the final versions of the Housing Element, Safety Element. We are on somewhat of a tight schedule. There were some law changes that took effect on January 1st of this year that give the state HCD a longer review period and require that the draft Housing Element be out for public review for at least 30 days prior to HCD even beginning their review. So it tightened our schedule by about eight weeks, but we still have the goal of, and the feasible goal of approving and certifying the Housing Element by January 2023, which is what's required by state law. And with that, I wanted to thank you for your time, and I'm available to answer any questions that you have, as well as Darren Newfeld. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions, then, on the last piece, Community Outreach and Engagement? Sounds like our HCD Committee has fully vetted that. I had one question about the schedule at the back of the Community Outreach Plan. I didn't see a reference to CEQA, and I imagine that that's factored in there somewhere.
Yes, there is a secret process, and I'm actually going to defer that question to Darren Newfeld.
Yeah. I think CEQA will depend on the impacts from these element updates. Right now, we have planned for a mitigated negative declaration that has a 30-day public review period. But we are open to working with city staff and city attorney if there's a different process that comes.
If it were a full EIR, would you still be able to meet the schedule of getting this to the state HCD on time?
We probably wouldn't, but I don't see any indication that this would require an EIR for this level of effort.
All right. Anything to add, Mr. Smith?
No, I don't. Just available to assist in answering any of those questions as well.
I have a follow-up question on what you asked about. It seems, as I recall from presentations last summer, that much of our allocation can be accommodated in existing either general plan land use designation, things designated in our general plan or in our two specific plans that we just recently did, the West Downtown and the North Downtown. So didn't those go through an environmental, a full environmental review process?
Yes, that's correct. And really, the only kind of trigger that could realistically, you know, bring us into EIR land is if there was some very significant rezoning program that was necessary to increase the city's capacity for housing. And that's something that we don't really foresee happening.
And I did have another question that I wrote down and then forgot to ask, if it's all right, Mayor. This is about the process with HCD and the assumption of two to three reviews based on what was going on in Southern California and the cities down there. Are we, is, what was going on with them? And what kind of comments were generally being, resulting that necessitated multiple rounds?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So there were a number of housing law changes, and several of them pertain to the Housing Element. As I mentioned, the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing is a brand-new section of Housing Elements for the very first time. It is a standalone document on its own. It's a very detailed analysis of census data, and it's almost a history of the city and all of the development patterns that have occurred in the city to identify, you know, areas of discrimination, or, you know, were there, was there discrimination in the planning process? Are there areas of, you know, high concentrations of certain racial groups and poverty combined and things like that? So this section, HCD didn't release its guidance on the section for the SCAG and Sandag regions until April of last year. And so everybody was flying blind a little bit. And so we didn't, exactly. So we didn't have a lot of guidance on how that needed to be prepared. And so what I've, in my experience, have found, depending on the community, HCD will scrutinize that section of the Housing Element more or less depending on the specific characteristics of that community. And so we've done more than one Housing Element, the SCAG region, and sometimes we had one round of review, and sometimes it was three, depending on, and a lot of it really centered on the fair housing section, I should say. The other thing that they was, there was more of a requirement this time is that for your sites inventory, before, you could say, that fully occupied retail center, it might be housing in the next eight years. Now, there's a substantial evidence requirement that you show evidence as to why that retail center would potentially be redeveloped with housing. You have to show either market data or some evidence of property owner interest or development patterns that 10 other retail centers during the last Housing Element cycle, and this is all hypothetical examples that I'm providing, 10 other retail centers during the last cycle redeveloped into housing in the same general area of the city. So there's a lot more evidence required, and the standard of evidence is not clear in the law, and it wasn't crystal clear in the guidance. So depending on the community, there were multiple requests for more information.
So it should be easier?
I think so. When I say two to three, I'm really hoping that it's two because of lessons learned, even though there are a lot of new requirements. We have the benefit of going through the Southern California region with some really good examples of certified elements at this point. So I do believe that we can preload the document for success with HCD because we can cover all of the issues that we've learned that they would like expanded information on. And then communities that maybe are more characteristically like Walnut Creek, we can kind of take those, the same approaches that we took.
So experience counts.
I think it does, yeah.
And actually, if I could add to that, I suspect that he is being a little bit modest here, but her team actually has been successful in getting certification for housing elements in Southern California, as actually has Nancy Brigado working independently with some other jurisdictions in Southern California. So we have a really good team that does actually have good recent and relative experience, successful experience in this.
Well, that's great. I think we should open it for public comment at this point. So I would invite, if any member of the public wishes to provide public comments, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. For those who desire to provide public comments, please raise your hand now. Each speaker will have two minutes to make their remarks, and the Zoom feed will cut off automatically at two minutes. Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
We do have a speaker, Jan Warren.
Terrific.
Okay, we ready?
We're ready to go. Hi, Jan.
Hello? Hi. Good evening. This is getting to be lonely. I was at the Planning Commission on Thursday, and I was the only one who spoke. And so I got the same presentation, and appreciate the overlap. I just wanted to add some additional comments to the ones I added Thursday. I'd like us to engage our libraries in the, I'm looking at the focus on the outreach, either to pick up or drop off surveys, fill out, you know, that would be helpful. I think it would be helpful to engage our, let's see, where did they go? Our CERT group for the Safety Element. Maybe the chair or whatever they're called on that group of experts with the fire and the water and so forth, to have our CERT person engaged and perhaps even use our CERT members to help pass out flyers or something. Let's see, blah, 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 blah. I don't know if there's a way that we engage our core homeless outreach. That would be nice, of faith congregations. And I'll comment what I said last Thursday. I was very struck by the cost burden for rent or monthly mortgage for Walnut Creek residents, particularly after listening to the presentation tonight from the Chamber of Commerce. And so I hope that when we go through this process, we'll be looking forward for plans and policies to see what we're going to need to do to help keep people in Walnut Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Any other public speakers?
No additional speakers.
Okay, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the Council. Staff is seeking our input on the draft Community Engagement Plan in particular. Are there any members of the Council that would like to lead off? How about Councilmember Darling?
Yeah, we, as the Housing HCD Committee, we looked at this and gave them some suggestions, such as materials for the farmer's market and engaging with the Homeless Task Force and a few other things like that, that it sounds like you're in the process of incorporating those in. I did want to find out, have you set the dates for the workshops?
Those haven't been completely firmed up just yet. We also wanted to receive input from the Council as a whole before we firm those up. One thing that actually has happened as of today was the Spring in a Nutshell was published, and on page six, you will see, I think it's most of the page, if I remember correctly, is an item on the Housing Element and really, the key goal of that particular, or the Housing and Safety Element update, I should say. And a key goal of that item in the nutshell is to steer people, steer people, the public, the community, to our dedicated webpage for the Housing Element. It's walnut-creek.org/HEU. And we'll be doing a similar one for the Safety Element update.
So is that website, website page live?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. I guess the nutshell said it.
Yes, yes.
Wouldn't be the first time things happen in the wrong order. All right. And so just let us know when the workshops do get set up.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Any other feedback for staff?
Just briefly, I'm glad you actually mentioned Farmer's Market. I was just there two days ago. People are always asking about housing. So any kind of material that's easy to read, graphics, those are great. Lots of text, not so great. So whatever we can do for that, that will be very, very helpful for our Farmer's Market activity moving forward.
And then there was a comment Ms. Warren made about outreach to the CERT team. I assume that'll happen with the Safety Element, yes? Okay. Good. I thought that was a good comment. And the staff report really, I think these were all vetted at the HCD Committee. I couldn't think of any other ones. On page four, had a lot of suggestions, the Farmer's Market, the library, the Trinity Center. And there's more.
The ones we provided, the additional comments we provided, were incorporated into the staff report, but not into the plan itself yet.
Yes, that's correct. The draft community engagement plan that's attached to the staff report is actually the same one that the planning commission and the HCD committee received. We were waiting until we received all the input from the three bodies before we update and finalize that plan.
Well, great job, and great job to the consultant, too. I was really impressed with who we've retained for this. And I'll also just add that, you know, watching other cities kind of scramble to meet their new Rena numbers, it's nice to be in a position where we've kind of adopted plans ahead of time and are in good shape to satisfy our housing element. So well done, staff and city on meeting those goals. And let's see, what else do we have on the agenda tonight? Okay, I think that's right. We are adjourned.